I'm calling on the Rutherford County Council this October the fourth, two thousand twenty-three. We thank all of those that are joining us here at town hall, plus those that are watching us live on my Rutherford, so thank you for being with us. We're always here the first Wednesday every month, and we invite you back again if you're a part of what's going on here in Rutherford. So our first order of business, would you please stand with me and join in our pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Let the record show that this crew is on a redeveloping time conflict. The three council members are here and we are present, so we'll go from there. Our first order of business is we turn it over to our citizens to voice any concerns or comments that you would like to make to the council. It does not necessitate any kind of response from them unless they so desire. They're free to speak at any time. It's more an opportunity for you to let us know what's important is going on with you. So at this time, if you have a public comment you want to make, if you let me know, I'll give you instructions for what to do. If you just go up to the podium there and give us your name and your address, then we'll let you roll for three minutes.
Three minutes?
Yep.
I'm Jim Van Dure, one seven nine, Air Force Drive, Rockford. I'm known as the Dead Tree Man. I'm bringing it up behind us. Amazing cities can dictate people's sidewalks, and we'll correct the sidewalk for you and charge you for it for that. Our trees fall against somebody, which is great on buildings. That's... The second thing is probably the water underneath the bridge. It's the tax fee for sanitation, which is the government's pick-up. I think there was four million dollars in collectible at the time. I'd like to know if that was more the poor section or the privilege that forced taxes towards other people. I knew where I live, I'd get the tax increase, top line. But two, that brings up whether that tax fee should be looked at for the seniors and not individuals, top line, because there are some places that we go on wheels, you know, wheels on wheels, that I'm sure these little ladies don't generate a garbage can in three months to get their tax money out of the way. Third thing is the sewage need. In my memory, the No M C was going to be turned into the text admittance by spring when I went back to New York. I told the town we have to increase the passing of sewer system, which we did. And then the textile industry said, we're not coming in. Then we were told about state power system is too big, we have to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to decrease the size. Nobody was held liable before that, which is passed on to the taxpayers to pay for that. My understanding was that after that debt has paid off, they would reevaluate our sewer rates and hopefully come down. I just checked mine today, and it's... To me, it seems unfair that your water is so much, and then your tax seventy percent of what your water is is your sewer's tax. Oh, it's only fifty percent. I'm glad I looked it up until today, it's seventy percent. So my question to the council is, has that debt been paid off from that state years ago? Should our sewer rates be forward with the prison oil? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Thank you. So those who come in time, and thank you for being here. Moving on to agenda, if you will look at that, you will see the agenda in front of you. May I remind you that approval is also includes the consent agenda, which has been from our last meeting, board of commissioners to ABC board, and also there's three resolutions on there, and especially call me if you have any questions or comments concerning that or motion.
We approve of the minutes of the consent agenda.
And are you approving the agenda? That's we approve of the whole agenda.
Yes.
As motion on the floor, we approve the agenda as printed, and is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Let the record show yes, you have. I do thank you. Moving on to approval of the mayor's report. I have signed a proclamation, I'd like to read the course of it to you, and then we'll have someone speak about it after I finish. But in all due respect to your chief, I won't read all of it, but I'll read the important parts of that in a minute. Whereas the town of Rutherford is committed to ensure the safety and security of those living and visiting Rutherford, and therefore I, Jimmy Nancy, Mayor Rutherford, do hereby proclaim October the eighth through the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, as a fire prevention week throughout this town, and I urge all the people of Rutherford to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in event of a fire or another emergency, respond when a smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and support the many public safety activities and efforts of Rutherford Fire and Rescue Department during Fire Prevention Week, two thousand twenty-three. We're very proud of all those men and women that are part of our fire department and saw it on the scene, the important role that they play in the safety of our community. And Chief, would you express that sincere thank you for this, like, council to them? And I'll let you forward for the next thirty seconds.
I agree. So this year's theme, so every year, the National Fire Protection Association sets a theme, this year's theme is cooking safety starts with you. So just want to get everyone aware of your surroundings and your kitchen, talk with your kids about cooking safety, you know, things we learned at a young age, it's such as turning pot handles away from the... Where the kids can tip them off, things like that. So make sure you have fire extinguishers in your home, your smoke detectors are working, that's a big one. And we are slam full on our schedule this month with schools. Spent half the day training today, and we'll be at Rutherford tomorrow, getting the little ones trained up and practicing fire safety and fire prevention. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. And like I said, he should tell everyone at the department that this is going to be a big month for you, a lot of things going on, and we'll talk about some others here in a second, but thank you.
So Chief, you're promoting eating out, I understand?
Sure, sure. Blood in Rutherford, bloodline, please. Now, I have some special duties that I get to perform. Let me get out here in front of everybody. Mr. Rogers, would you come up here in front with me, please? Just because you sit on the back row doesn't mean a thing. I want you to come up. Now, when you stand up there, be prepared. I don't want to tell these people about some of the things they already know, but I want to be mindful. This is a resolution that the council just approved, ordering Principal Phil Rogers. Whereas Phil Rogers began teaching full-time in RS Central High School in the fall of nineteen ninety-six, and during this time served as coach for cross-country, basketball, baseball, and softball. And whereas Mr. Rogers became assistant principal in July two thousand seven, and serves as interim principal in December two thousand eight. And whereas Mr. Rogers has served as principal at RS Central High School since July two thousand and nine. And whereas Principal Phil Rogers was recently honored by the Rutherford County Board of Education for being named Rutherford County Schools' Principal of the Year. And whereas the town of Rutherford wishes to congratulate Principal Phil Rogers as his accomplishments and now therefore being resolved by the Rutherford County Council. The Rutherford County Council expresses its appreciation and gratitude to Phil Rogers for his outstanding work and all the efforts, training, and leading our local educators so that our teachers may continue to educate and possibly influence you for today as they become the leaders of tomorrow and for the continued success of RS Central High School under his amazing leadership. Adopted this fourth day of October, two thousand twenty-three, signed Jimmy Nancy, Mayor. Congratulations, sir. I want to say a few things, then I will turn the next fifteen minutes over. We got time, Chief, so I can only give you fifteen. That's the reason I took the tack of thirteen. But Phil is very instrumental, not only in being principal at RS Central, but Phil has involved in several of our committees and has assisted in a lot of other different areas that is beneficial to this whole community outside of the school. So Phil has been an excellent citizen, but he has devoted a lot of time and effort, and allows us to do a lot of things in this town that we appreciate him being there. And he most deservedly was voted as being the Principal of the Year. But we congratulate him, sir, on behalf of this whole council, we thank you for being who you are. And now I will turn it over to you.
Well, it's a privilege to be recognized by you. I appreciate it very much. I don't like being recognized a lot, I know the media guy in the back, but I appreciate it. I guess that's hard for me. I'm a proud citizen of the town of Rutherford. I live on Purple Blue Drive. I've lived here from me and my wife, got married in two thousand, moved to Rutherford, and I've been privileged to teach and coach, work at RS Central, and serve all the communities for, I guess, about twenty-nine years now. And it's a... It is a privilege, and I'm thankful for the opportunity to do it. Just glad to be here.
Thank you, sir. These are the great things that our council loves to do, we recognize those citizens in our communities that makes it possible for us to do a lot of things that we get credit for in here. We have a lot of people saying that, well, one of the special groups we wanted to thank tonight, and I'm going to ask some, remember how many there are here? If you would just come forward, ask the burden, but please come up and join me up front. Come on up. Now, the council just approved this resolution also, and I apologize if I will not read the whole thing, but I'll give you the good ones, okay? But we wanted to say this, too. Resolution celebrating ninety years with the Rutherford Garden Club. Whereas the Rutherford Garden Club is now ninety years old and is among the oldest garden clubs in North Carolina. Now therefore being resolved by the Rutherford County Council, the town of Rutherford expresses its appreciation and gratitude to the Rutherford Garden Club for their outstanding work and all of their efforts in making our town a beautiful place to live and work. Adopted this fourth day of October, two thousand twenty-three, Jimmy Nancy, Mayor. Congratulations. But this is another group. This town is very proud of its history, but it's proud of those people that have been around for a long time. Garden clubs have been around for a long time. That means a lot, because it meant something to them, our town, to be like it is. And we congratulate them because the beauty that we have in this town, the beauty that people talk to us about, you guys are the ones responsible for a lot of that and been responsible for ninety years, the people that preceded you and the people that are going to follow you, hopefully will have a safe vision. But I know I see from Christmas time with the wreaths to planting cards all over the place and stuff, and a lot of times you do not get the thank yous that you deserve. We see it, and we'll make comments to somebody with, oh, didn't that look great? But you should be the one to thank, too, because you're the one to thank. Now, I want to turn it over to you, Roger. You speak, and I'll let you go. Now, I may have to talk time with you later, for a minute.
I'll try to keep it short. Thank you for the honor. It's a privilege to be a part of the garden club, and I hope that we can continue for ninety more years. And right now, our project is selling the Christmas fruit, so we appreciate the businesses that support us so that we can continue the projects that do the farming in our town.
So again, on behalf of this council and all of our citizens, thank you for the work that you do. We obviously see the work results. We may not actually see you working, but we can appreciate what you do in our town and making it especially to be as always. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I have some little closing comments to make sure that we are aware of. And Doug, you feel free to add on anything, because this is important, things coming up that needs a little bit of conversation more than that I will give. So first of all, make sure everybody remembers, I know we remember, the Hilltop Festival is Saturday at the October seventh, beginning at ten a.m. Join us for food, fun, awesome vendors, and so much more. In fact, we talked about a lot, and we are full of vendors, so, and sadly, we had to turn some away, but we only have certain bits space to deal with, and those people that got in early were able to get in, all right? So we encourage you to come out and be a part of Saturday. Also, Chief, we talked about, we got something special coming up. The grand opening for our fire station number two will be October the twenty-sixth at four p.m. I just, I was just out there a day or two ago. Looks great from the outside, so everything, they did a great job, very good job in getting together, so I know you're proud of that building, watch this all right. And then also the Trick or Treat on Main is October the thirty-first, starting at four o'clock, four until six. Thirty-first, I believe, is on Tuesday, and so we encourage all the young people to come out and be with us at that time. Doug, you, anyone else want to add to what I just talked about? I just put myself on the back. I made that pretty good, didn't I? Okay? Yeah, if we could redo the rest, we'd be all right. Moving on to old business, correct?
Yes, sir. So the first item on our old business is Resolution ten twenty-four. This comes up from last month. You had engaged the town to allow us to move forward with the sale of lots, lots two, three, and five in the redevelopment zone from the family community redevelopment plan. That was an upset bid process, so the resolution that was approved last month, we needed to put that out for a ten-day upset bid period. We did do that notification in the earlier, went for the, actually went for twelve days because ten days was on a weekend. We did not receive an upset bid for that, so the bid still is at seven hundred and fifty dollars with the plan that was put forward there. So for the, for lots number two and lot number five, those would be duplex units, and lot number three would be the three single-family townhome units. And so what this resolution does is it formalizes the final authorization of the council. Recognizes that we did receive the bids, that we did notice the bids, we did go through the ten-day upset bid period, we did not receive any other upset bids, and authorizing myself and that to move forward with the sale of those three lots to KPP Diversified Holdings.
Any questions, comments from council?
We approve of Resolution ten dash twenty-four.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Let the record show these three, oh, thank you. Moving on, I have a D, R two two three three, DB Street, remaining impacted, any discussion?
So this brings up a discussion from probably a year ago, and if you remember, the two-twenty-one bypass, with its construction, will segment, actually, four roads inside the city of Rutherford. And they'll all have maps for three of those because one of them, there's no affected parcels as far as the residents that are undeveloped parcels. So this is Colette Street. The red line is the two-twenty-one bypass. And so what we tried to look at was, as the bypass intersects these parcels, intersects these roads, there will be cul-de-sacs built on either side of the road. And so without action from the town council, Colette Street will have an address, will have addresses on what we consider the bottom side, so with access off of Elm and Cedar, but you will not be able to trans, you won't be able to go all across that, and you have to come from the opposite side. So it can become very confusing, especially as staff transitions with public safety in an emergency situation, delivery drivers, bus routes, all of different things that access data through the nine-one-one system or GIS data or mapping data. So what we're asking for is the ability to look at some names to rename some of these streets. So the three major streets that have affected parcels as far as properties are Colette Street, which you can see here, and what we tried to do, again, was pick the side of the road that had the least impact, because all of these property owners are going to have to notify, you know, they're going to have to notify the bank accounts, they're going to have to get the driver's license changed. I mean, it is an impact on these property owners, but long-term, it allows them to ensure that they're not getting missed by, by anything that would be coming their way. So that'll be Colette Street, you can see the parcels there. East Second Street, there's two parcels. One is actually a business, I admit it's auto, and the other is a residence there that fronts East Second Street. And then also the new, to be built bus garage, which would be on this location here, on the, this campus will have that. And then on Southern Street, this is actually up on the roof side, but this map needs to be updated. There's actually two parcels down here on the, on the Rutherford side that we would recommend after further research, before, after these maps were created last year. In conversation with Ruth, this street is actually Southern Street Extension, and that's why I wanted to show this map. And so it doesn't make sense for us to ask Ruth to look at a renaming of Southern Street on the very end, it would actually be on our side of the fence. And so there's two properties down below this, near the cemetery that front Southern Street in Rutherford that would be affected, so it was two of two, but on the roof side of the Southern Street Extension, it doesn't make sense to rename on that side. So kind of straight one back, about a year ago, we reached out to the county that handles our addressing system, and they have been working extremely hard to try to find a way to ensure that we don't continue to have duplication of names throughout the county. There's so many names that are already duplicated. And so we did a survey with some names that were pre-populated, that were kind of pre-approved, if you will, from the county nine-one-one system. You can see those five there. So these are, these are the five names. In that survey, we had ninety-two surveys taken with eighty-one responses of the pre-selected names, but then there were a lot of folks that kind of added some names. There was an opportunity to look at a name, and we believed it might work, for Mathis Street. So there's a Doc Mathis who lives on Colette Street. She born and raised on Colette Street, has been there her entire life, so she's the oldest living resident on Colette Street. But unfortunately, there are multiple different iterations of Mathis Street in Rutherford County according to the nine-one-one system, so that would not be an option for us. And so what we're trying to do is come up with some names based on that survey. So kind of recommending East Second Street is Daybreak Drive is one of the ones that was voted on in the survey. Colette Street is Carrier Court, again, one that came from the survey. The town side of Southern Street is Purple Martin Place, and Rees Street is Dunker Street, and that, Dunker is one of the founding fathers of the Trail Board. So this portion of Rees Street that would remain open is up on the back side of the Trail Board. So really wanted to kind of have a conversation tonight, get your thought, get your inputs. The way this would happen, it would be done by a resolution. We would need to notify, obviously, all of the property owners, so we would do a resolution with a date a little bit farther in the future, sixty-nine days. We would notify all the property owners so they can begin notification of all of their folks. We could give them a checklist of opportunities for them to look at who they'll need to notify, order the street signs, and kind of do that, you know, later times. So sixty to ninety days delay between the renaming and the official installation of the street signs. So with that, I'll stop and let you answer any, ask any questions, or just general debate around names or other opportunities for us to make.
When will the streets be cut off by the two-twenty-one bypass? Does that gives us a timeframe we can get?
Great question. That's one of the reasons I wanted to bring this back up. So East Second Street has been closed for probably six, eight months or so now. Colette Street actually closed officially on Monday and will remain closed for the duration of the construction and after. And Southern Street is already closed. So the next one to close will be Rees Street, and that will be sometime in the next two to three months. So three of the four are already, already closed.
So Doug, in sixty days, you can change some EMS and police and fire.
And what we're doing now is working with police chief and fire chief through the nine-one-one system. They put kind of like a call note hold on the CAD system, so if anything comes in there that it's showing up on the system, but long-term, we want to remove that and just rename the streets.
Chief, both of you, this becomes very important to you on emergency situation, to know where you need to go. And it'd be great if we could keep the same name, but it's, it's not safe. And this just makes it more convenient in case they do need help immediately. It cuts down the time if we know where we're going. So it is, it's a necessity as far as that is concerned. But Doug, just wanted to get council thoughts and let you know that we're all on the verge of needing to do something.
I see no problem with the names as picked, so I would make a resolution, a motion for a resolution to proceed with the two-twenty-one street being versions.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, any further discussion or questions from council?
Due to the fact that most of those streets are already closed, if there was plans to reopen them, I'd say we'd plead with all due haste. What if, if this grass is out for six months, and people would say, well, why are you changing it? We did it for six months, and everybody's tired of our yard.
We can go ahead and draft all the letters, have the letter ready, have a resolution ready for November. We can, I've already looked at a kind of checklist to help the property owners walk through, driver's license, homeowners insurance, and kind of a list of stuff to call. We can have all that ready to send out first of November, and then they can look at January one or end of January kind of launch for the names kind of thing. How about when we come to the November meeting with that resolution? We'll need to turn that resolution into the county, that'll give the county time to change everything in the GIS system, change all the addressings. None of the address numbers should change, it's just going to be the street address.
Any further discussion, questions, comments? There's a motion on the floor, is there a second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Let the record show these events, and I thank you. To all those citizens that it's going to affect, we do apologize for having to do it, because it does want to force them to do some changes on addresses. But due to the bypass coming through there, and we just mentioned for safety reasons, it's very important we can get to their house, so we need to. So I thank you, Chief. I believe we want to jump into new business, correct?
Yes, sir.
Rutherford Redevelopment Plan.
All right, so this is a very, very, very long process. As you all may or may not remember, you all voted to approve and create the Rutherford Commission back in October of two thousand twenty, which is three years ago, which is a little hard for me to believe, but now we're here, we have a plan before you. So the first little bit of a portion of the plan just talks about the housing needs assessment that Boa National Research did for the urban redevelopment area. They went out and knocked door to door, they, can you just scroll down to page thirty? If that's right.
Thirty?
Yeah. Perfect, thank you. So Boa National Research completed the housing needs assessment to really understand that comprehensive need of the housing stock within the urban redevelopment area and provide recommendations for the town to fight the housing crisis that works in ways that it pretend. Through this, we really understood that a one-size-fits-all approach is not going to do the work that we need to fight that housing crisis. So we created this plan that has a really comprehensive approach to fight the housing crisis and really impact the lives of citizens who can call up for a tent home. So under direction of the Redevelopment Commission, the town council, or the two town council members who sit on the Redevelopment Commission, the incoming board, we brought this plan forward. So... So we are looking for a recommend, or a town council to call for a public hearing with the members from council meeting. This plan has four major goals and objectives. So goal one is adjusting the urban maintenance properties. So that is encouraging and facilitating home repairs for people who live in what the urban redevelopment area. And to pursue partnerships with municipal organizations to address exterior home cosmetics, the stuff that I guess like the dirty work, the exterior work of the homes. Goal two is addressing the vacant dilapidated properties and decreasing that plight and removing the routine homes that we own actual research identified within the redevelopment area and then renovating those properties for future community urban development. Goal three is investing in neighborhood amenities that benefit the low moderate income residents such as parks, green spaces, and improvements to the physical environment that increase public safety, such as streetlights and sidewalks. And then goal four is increasing the supply of available affordable housing. So we wrote this plan in two different cases that goes along with the grant money in grants that we received. So the first grant, we received a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from the Dogwood Health Trust to begin the work of redevelopment commission. So this, this has been kind of in the process for, I want to say like six months or so. So with this, we've been able to create a home repair program in partnership with Rutherford Housing Partnership. So we've set a list of guidelines for homeowners within the urban redevelopment area to qualify for Rutherford Housing Partnership to come to repair on their homes. We've addressed some of the, or six of the thirteen blighted structures that Boa National Research identified within the urban redevelopment area. I know it's a little hard to see on the screen, but there are the blue dots that are in the, in that map. I want to say three of them, no, two, two of them were within that RFP that we brought before council last month for the Fairview community housing stock. Goal three is the infrastructure, so we were able to install a new sewer line along Recreation Street and really re-amp and renovate Second Street Park in line with the community mission. And then lastly, we, we have the RFP that we have for the five different lots within the urban, in the urban community. So this is kind of a list of, as of eight sixteen, I need to update this to present as of today, we spent all of the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of that first grant. So phase two, we have a whole list of priorities and things that we want to accomplish with the second five hundred thousand dollar grant that we got from Dogwood Health Trust. So we would like to touch an additional thirteen homes through our home repair program. We would love to organize a community cleanup day to do some of those beautification cosmetic projects within both the Fairview and New Hope neighborhoods. We want to clear the remaining of the seven, I didn't, I brought fly disstrucures within the urban redevelopment area and continue to renovate those properties to turn them over for future development. We, have we started the sidewalk project or that's in the mix? So doing the sidewalk connectivity project from Fairview Park to Purple Martin Greenway, we would love to resurface Shaden Street with the new Calum Ross coming. We want to leverage our parks plan to identify master supporting of more green space within the urban redevelopment area and continue to seek state and federal funding for sidewalk connectivity of the New Hope, for, along North Rich Crest Avenue in the New Hope neighborhood. And then finally, the housing stuff, we would love to leverage two more affordable housing units across all income levels by twenty twenty-four, continuing to work with nonprofit and for profit, for profit developers to bring affordable inequality happening back to both neighborhoods. And then of course, encourage and support development strategies such as swimming overlays to encourage multifamily development across or in access to affordable housing and develop proposals to update city initiatives or incentives to facilitate affordable housing on land and on market based organizations. So we have a whole lot, we've already began the work, and we've seen a lot of success in revealing free love and trust within those neighborhoods and the community. And I'm excited to continue the work through the redevelopment plan. So I know that that was a lot of the information, so I would love to answer any questions that you may have, but we're really, really looking for people to call a public hearing to finally adopt this, which I think is a good one for the town council meeting.
Well, I want to make some comments first. I first want to thank that committee of the work that they have done. You took, this committee took on a project that, that was very easy to push aside in the past and just let it go and nothing ever changes except against words. So, you know, this, it was a challenge to take this project on. That being said, quite a remarkable work that has been done. And to those that are waiting for something to happen in their community, it's extremely important to committees when they get grant money from somewhere and we spend it wisely and we get the biggest bang for the dollar because we're going to have to go back and kind of get some more. And these other grant people, they come back, when they come back, look, what did you get for, what'd you do with? So we want to show them what we can do with the funds that we get. And I think it's done, this committee's done an excellent job, but to this point, and we should be proud of showing other grant possibilities that we do what we say we want to do. And this committee should be proud of the work that you've done. And I, I thank you for taking on the project, like I said, that has been criticized too long. And you're making a difference in this community, and I appreciate the work of this committee. Any questions, comments from council?
Yeah, we have two red dots on the outside of our town. It's inside. We, we ran it, so it's as far. Have we? Up on North Rich Crest?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because I just hate to see those, since the county has no, I checked today, they have no blighted structure ruling or anything of the sort.
Those are between the we annexed, they are.
Dr. Cheats is referring to our dilapidated abandoned structures. Those are very close to the ones that we've annexed over the last year, and those are not the abandoned structures on the far side of Rich Crest.
These are on the right-hand side covered by teds. Is there any way to, we can't do annexation anymore outside. Can we approach the owners to be annexed them? And they will maybe use some of this to clear out those areas? Or approach the county commissioner, let us extend our blighted thing at least, you know, quarter mile outside perimeter?
We can definitely send a letter, and that's my, my idea, I don't know what response we'll get, it's not, it doesn't hurt to ask.
But it would have to be voluntary.
It would have to be voluntary. The only, really the only recourse that Rutherford County has right now, I don't view it as an effective tool, but the tool that they're using is property board.
Any other question to come in from council?
Moving to schedule with public hearing regarding the redevelopment plan.
So that, if you call for a public hearing, it would be for the November town council meeting?
Yes. There's a motion on the floor and a second, any further discussion? All those favor, raise your right hand. That record showed is three oh, thank you. Public hearing in November.
I'm sorry, Dr. Cheats, I'm like, we're asking what it was, I didn't know that you were making a connection.
Yeah, that's okay. I'm confused a lot of that.
Moving on to Adam P.
All right, this is a memorandum, memorandum of understanding with the Foothills Four County Home Consortium, which we are one of the founding members of. So the Foothills Home Consortium started back in twenty twenty-one, and there was a founding consortium, M L U, that went on in February twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and actually expires in October of twenty twenty-three. And so this allows us three more years of membership in the consortium. Those members that we work with are Cleveland County, McDowell County, Polk County, Rutherford County, the cities of Kings Mountain, Marion, Shelby, Saluda, and also the towns of Forest City, Spindale, Rutherford, and Old Ford. And so that is a program administered by HUD. McDowell County is actually our lead agent mainly because the demographic data in McDowell County was more favorable for our HUD application, and they have been the one that has been our lead agency, although it is administered by Foothills Regional Commission right here in Rutherford. This has been a program that has been, something that has been kind of thought through and worked on for quite some time. I was a co-chair of the consortium housing, housing task force back before COVID, and this was our main recommendation to break away from the state consortium and then form our own local consortium. Because what that means is an annual allocation of over eight hundred thousand dollars in funds for housing projects. And so I just want to kind of go through this. Magnolia is actually our appointed person on the consortium, and so she, she knows these more than I do, but they have handed out, I say handed out, or sought applications from local nonprofits over the last two years and moved forward with new programs. And so just kind of looking at the four county area, they've given funds to Habitat for Humanity in Cleveland County, Habitat for Humanity in Rutherford County, Rutherford County Housing Partnership, Housing Assistance Corporation, given to state, and so that's the main, mainly Habitat, the three habitats, and then also Rutherford Housing Partnership and given to state. So the total so far has been given out of almost one point six million. There's still right around two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars of this year's allocation that's not allocated, and that's still available for rolling applications. So there is an application process for anybody that is a nonprofit and is working on housing programs, they go through it and fund those. Those are based on a twenty-five percent match. So if anybody's read through the MOU, it basically says with our membership, we are agreed to a twenty-five percent match of the eight hundred, the first allocation was eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, the second allocation this year was for eight hundred and thirty-six thousand. We expect that to go up just a little bit more in twenty twenty-fourth. But what we're asking is that the applications that come in for funding bring the twenty-five percent match, and most of those are bringing those through either income, and those can be income contributions, land, or cash matches from other sources to match funds from consortium. So to date of the one point six million that has been given out through the consortium, the first year the match was made in a cash contribution from Dogwood Trust to the four county region. In the second year, all of those applications brought their own twenty-five percent match. So the town is not looking to cover matches in our jurisdiction. We would need to bring a match, and we have project that needs to be brought forward. So with that, I'll stop and let you answer any, ask any questions you may have, but this is just another avenue that has opened up additional resources for housing that we have not been able to tap into up until this time. And I will say for Scott's article, I see him drop a note there, one of the things that the consortium members are looking for, and we have reached out to the other jurisdictions inside the four county region, is we cannot go much more as far as the county, counties that are set up, but other jurisdictions are welcome to join because the more jurisdictions in the four county region that join the consortium, the more dollars flow in. So as our population numbers inside these jurisdictions expand, so if, say, I think Marion's, if other cities in Shelby are in Shelby, in Cleveland County, I think there's sixteen jurisdictions in Cleveland County, if one of those wants to join in, if there's others in Polk County, say Columbus or Tryon that are not participating, that will increase the dollars flowing into consortium for other projects.
If we had projects that have been in our town from any agency?
I don't believe so. We have partner agencies that have been funded, but I don't believe that there are any of these projects that are on business that are specifically in the city of Rutherford.
So none of our partners haven't done anything with the money and stuff, right?
Correct. And some of that is just the fact that this was the, this was the first time, this was, they just gave out the two years' worth of allocations in this last funding cycle, so they were a little behind the eight ball and just did a funding cycle that was approved. As we continue to start, that was the first one that gave out roughly one point six million. As this continues to grow traction, I do imagine that there may even be opportunities for the town ourself to apply for funding opportunities and our, and partners that we've been working with to apply.
Under our redevelopment plan with the five hundred thousand, we came up with a project like that. Can we use some of the five hundred thousand for the twenty-five percent match?
Yeah.
If we can hold another seventy-five percent?
We can use dividends, we can use income contributions from, say, my time or Magnolia's time or Public Works time, if there's things that Public Works is doing. You can also use two years, two years prior match as well. So any infrastructure, anything that would happen that is near or around that project that qualifies as a funding opportunity, so like the sidewalk that's being installed on Recreation Street, or the new sewer line that was installed earlier this year on Recreation Street. Those dollars, even though they were done by town forces, are matched dollars towards any project that we may submit on Recreation Street, or one of our partners may submit on Recreation Street. That's just an example. That can happen anywhere inside the city limits, and you have, the clock goes backwards two years on this.
It seems that we're going to be a part of the consortium, we need to be an active recipient of some of their resources.
And I do envision that we will. With it being so young and really just with Penny coming on full-time as the housing planner for Foothills Consortium, Foothills Regional Commission, and really picking up this work, we had so much going on with the grants that we were visiting right now, we just didn't really have a project that matched this, but I do envision that we will. And I mean, just having that as a resource, as a, as a reoccurring resource is going to be a great opportunity for us.
And so this provides us another avenue that when we start to look at something, it's possible this will be one of the things that we look at and be a great opportunity for us getting involved, starting, because we know a little bit about it. And so it's just a way of getting another partner.
The other thing that I will mention is that I think excites me about, about this program is that, Chief, Chief, and Penny, is that the programs that are approved programs, so mainly the Habitat, the Habitat for Humanities and Rutherford Housing Partnership, they are getting a direct capacity building set aside into eight hundred thousand dollars for their overhead. So while we may not have a direct project in Rutherford Ten that was administered by Rutherford Housing Partnership, they got thirteen thousand five hundred dollars to assist them with capacity building and administration of projects in general for their organization. So it is helping Habitat for Humanity of Rutherford County, Cleveland County, and I forget the one that's in, helps me, one that covers the northern part, anyway, I've not seen here off, I'm trying to head, but Cleveland County, Rutherford County, but then also Rutherford Housing Partnerships, they're getting funds to help their nonprofit remain viable as well.
We can see them in our town, north in our.
Yeah. And the projects are split throughout the entire area. I think the only area, the only county that hasn't had a project was Polk County so far. So they have their projects in Rutherford County, projects in Cleveland County, and we got.
So they could use that on the Fairview lots and get with Hattie. Also, since we could use money from stuff we already scheduled and other stuff, we could apply for advance that could be applied to projects outside of our J R A. We could use J R A money.
Yes.
So you could say, I'll do, I want to pick up something on, on the board, somebody gets.
And do keep in mind, these programs, and one of the reasons we have an plan, one of the, one of the specific, the specific requirements is we have to create the house, either the town. Either the town would create it, or through a public-private partnership, the town would physically be creating housing. So it's not, these are not infrastructure dollars. These are true housing creation dollars that have median income requirements for that house. So a good example is if we wanted to maybe look at a way to assist Gateway in additional capital for a house in Prequod Meadows to move that project forward, that would be something that we could do an application for. So you actually have to create the house itself. You can't, you can buy, you can use it to buy property or buy other types of things. But at the end of the day, what has to come out of that as a double is, is the housing unit has to be created.
Any other questions to come in?
Maybe we have heard, getting in to the MOU for twenty twenty-three.
Motion number four, is there a second? There is a second and further discussion. All those in favor, raise your hand. Let the record show you is three of them. And just my final comment on this is, this is a good project, because not all projects are the same. And every time we can give Magnolia or Doug more things to look at, then your projects fit in certain situations better than others. So this will help give them something else to work with. Great, thank you. Moving on to item C, or this ten twenty-four ARPA budget.
So this is just another clean up item on our ARP funds. The revenue line, that's how much interest we earn. So to spend the money on ARP for these things, we have to recognize the funds. So that's just recognizing that. The next two lines, COVID supplies and projects. If you remember when all of the information first came out about ARP funds, it was you're going to have to have approved projects, or you can spend it on COVID supply, or you can spend it on salaries. And so when we created the budget, we just kind of allocated X, Y, Z, you know, to get that, because you had to get the budget set up. Well, then they came out and logged the information, you can just do revenue replacement, which is what we chose to do because we fell under that threshold. So that's why the COVID supplies and the projects, I'm decreasing those amounts because if you're not specifically using it for that, we're using it for revenue replacement, which is indicated as we transfer to other funds to replace revenues. So it's just cleaning that up and getting them in the right category.
Question to come in, is for you.
So the transfer of funds is just moving it into another fund account that is not spending.
I'm not actually transferring it, this is just the budget side of it. It's not the actual action side of it, it's just the budget side. I still only, and you'll see in the next section, I still only make the transfers once you guys approve what we're going to spend it on. And that's just to get it budget-wise in the right category.
Any other questions to come in? I entertain a motion to stop.
Movefully approved, or this ten twenty-four.
Motion on the form of approved request, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second and any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Let the record show you is unanimous, three O. Moving on to state directed grants discussion. I've skipped one. I marked the wrong one again. Or just one more word, it must be there. I'm happy marking. That has to be good, great kiss, wouldn't it?
All right, so just some cleanups in the general fund. Item one is some amazing rest registrations for the Thoroughbought Rail Trail that ran through us. So that's just, I've got to recognize it to get that money to the RDC. The item two was a grant that was received from the Polanas Club of Rutherford, Tim, for children audio books at the library. So that's recognizing those funds and all grabbing it, and spending all the audio books. Item three is various fundraisers that are going on with the community garden, recognizing their charities. Item four is one of the ARP items that you guys had approved, which was the paving of the Chrisview Walking Trail and restructuring the parking areas. That will be recognizing the funds from the ARB into the general fund to be able to do that project. Item five, same thing, recognizing the ARP funds to be transferred in. And this was approved at the last meeting for the purchase of sixteen Motorola radios and software updates on twenty-nine radios. And then item six is just additional registrations from the Hilltop Festival.
Questions to come in?
Movefully approved, or this eleven to X twenty-four.
Motion number four, and there is a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Let the record show you is unanimous, three O. Moving on to item E, state directed grant discussion.
This is the one you've been waiting for with your pencil marks, man. Yes, there is. I want to start off my comments before we get into this discussion with an extreme word of thank you, gratitude, and appreciation to our local delegation from Raleigh. We have been very well represented, at least in the state budget when it comes to dollars. By Rutherford, no matter what your politics are, it's hard to say that the investment of nine point two million dollars to the town of Rutherford from the state of North Carolina, that's hard to say not thank you to. So I have some appreciation. So I want to say a big thank you to Representative Jake Johnson and Senator Tim Moffett for their assistance in these funds. So in this year's budget, the town of Rutherford was awarded three state-directed grants in those areas that you can see here. The first was for four million dollars at the capital fund. And these are titles from state government. These are not things that say these, these are how they read in the state government. So four million dollars for capital improvements, including repairs and renovations for police and other municipal buildings, four million to the town of Rutherford for the fire department to replace and upgrade the current bladder truck, one million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Then there are utility fund, three million, six hundred and thirty thousand dollars for wastewater treatment plant, two pump stations, and some gravity lines in the new area. So some major dollars coming our way on the state budget. I know there are other jurisdictions inside the county that have received funds. The largest of those, which was, I think, in today's newspaper, thirty, over thirty million dollars to the Isle of Combe College for the Health Sciences Building. Almost a hundred million dollars across the entire county of projects. And as I look through, as I look through the budget itself, I don't know that I've saw another jurisdiction that received that much funding. So I think there were a few others that had some large dollars in the middle of the state. As far as the rural county, I don't know that there were any other rural counties that had almost a million dollars of funding across. So really good, good year for Rutherford County in general, a lot of great projects to say. So with all that said, we need some direction on staff as to how to do it. Obviously, we will get grant, we will get these grant documents in the next probably month to two months from the state, we'll execute those, and that will then begin to transfer those dollars into our coffers. We have been recipients of state-directed grants in the past. Typically, the way those state-directed grants work, and I don't anticipate any major changes this year, we're not cultivating. Once we execute the grant contract for these three, these will all be three, these will be three separate grant contracts. We will have to set up a project fund. We'll have one, we'll have to add new lines.
Have to make budget amendments.
To that project fund. And they will transfer those dollars to the town. So we will be sitting on those, that nine million dollars. And then the interest earned will have to be applied back to that specific project. So any interest earned on three point six million for the sewer projects, we go towards that sewer project. Any interest earned on fire projects, anything on police department project, so on and so forth. So that's good for us because the market is up a little bit. And hopefully we can give a little extra funding on this. So we'd like to begin the process, because a lot of these things are not, these are not turn the switch, these are not flick of the wrist type projects. These are long drawn out projects before you get to a point of spending dollars. Or for the instance of the fire truck that the chief's here for, I mean, that can be two years before those dollars are spent. So we'd like to begin having a conversation on a case-by-case basis of how we can move forward. So taking these one at a time, the first one under the town of Rutherford for the capital improvements to this building and to other municipal buildings. We have had a space needs study done, we did kind of looking at the existing conditions plan. We did have a kind of proposed floor plan that was drawn up a couple of years ago by Talion Smith, that kind of outlines the opportunity to turn one twenty-nine North Main Street into our police department. But what, what we'd like to do to at least begin that process now is to do nothing more than to engage the RFP process, RFQ process. In order to hire an architect, we need to put out requests for qualifications, score them, judge them, seek their proposals about them redrawing this building and getting us through the construction and administration piece. So that could take, it could take forty days or so, forty-five days, maybe even as close to sixty days. We've been hiring architects back to you until the, maybe the November meeting, but more than likely it'll be the December meeting before we even look at recommending an architect and what that may or may not cost for this project. So that would be our first step here, is go ahead and allow us to release that RFQ, see if there's not any for us to bring an architect in on this project. We get it to a point where we know how much of that one million dollars would be spent on the renovations here. Now, I know that trigger starts to ask a lot of questions about where do you go temporarily? Where do you move things temporarily? How do you move things around? We've been working on those, chief's already had some conversations around some secure documents and evidence. And until we really know what the architect is going to tell us about timetables and construction and maybe phasing, we have some options, but I can't answer those until we start this process. And so I know there may be some questions you have about that, just questions that I've talked with Chief Engel about, about how that could look and could work. But at the end of the day, until we start that road, I don't know that I can fully answer all of those. So I'll stop there and kind of take these on a one-on-one. But the first one would be to see if you would allow us to get with architect for this project.
Yes. How, given that we now property, we've now owned the first street property, but looking for the corrections. And given that there's another five acre tract that's got buildings on it, that has occurred since we started this process, I would like for council to have a work session or something to talk about the properties and what we plan to do with it. In my mind, we may be better off having a governmental complex if we get the steel property and put police department down there and making this building available for some other commercial use than doing something we started two or three years ago when we didn't know we were going to have that option. I just think we need to understand what we've got and what our plans are to move forward. I sort of like the idea of having a government complex where things are more consolidated rather than spread them out. I could live with us going here, but I believe we make a mistake if we don't take it up or consider all of our options before we hire an architect to start doing renovations for this building.
I don't think you're ready to do renovations.
If you hire an ARP with an architect, you are.
But I think architect's going to give us some thought process.
No, he's going to get a look at that footprint and refine it and go to building.
And then that gives you an idea of what he projects. We will start building if they don't, council ready to do so.
He's going to use that to build, to come up with plans and specifications for the building. And what if we decide there's a better place for the police department than here? Because we have options, and we didn't have several of these. That's all I'm saying. We haven't talked about it as a council, how we see if we get the elementary steel property, how we see that becoming part of our entity. And it doesn't need to happen, happens to us. I just would like for the five of us, or whoever else, to have some dialogue on that before we go to hire an architect to refine the audience the way this the police department.
Well, I personally, I don't want to speak for them, but I think that's a good process for us to talk, and I am, and you staff some ideas of our thought process.
And we want their idea, I want their ideas of how basically that property being used in police theater, how we go fill that property up.
Would you say that property, which property?
Come down the potential element.
I would just say this, we did spend a good amount of time during the process with Talion Smith with evaluation of this building. And at that time, the town still had two other locations that were possible locations for police departments. And I think one of the things that we've learned in the twenty years that we've been here is that cohabitating town offices, and no disrespect, Clint, our police department is not a good exercise. That the exercise of trying to bring police services and other governmental services into the same building has a lot of downside to it for the public and for just general operations. And so one of the things we looked at at that time in that recommendation from Talion Smith was that the police department really needs to be its own standalone entity with its own standalone ability to have its, its records, its evidence storage, its forensic ability, its interview ability, and its confidentiality ability as one building. And so I understand what you're saying about the ability to bring governmental services together and the possibility of more land. But I would still argue with you or try to debate with you to see that there is value in keeping this structure as a standalone police station and allowing them to have their own space that serves the community out of one facility and not have them co-mangled in another space. So I think we kind of went down that road with this building. And again, I'm very much open to having a dialogue around what we do for space needs because they are so great. But I do say that this, you know, as an advocate for the police department and for moving this process forward with a need for town hall and a need for police station, the need for the police station would outweigh the need for office space for us at some point. Because we are out of evidence storage, we are out of record storage for our records retention. And so if we don't look at an immediate need to begin finding a way to create more space for the police under a plan very similar to this, I just don't know how much longer we can work to do that. And with construction prices continuing to go up, every time that we wait, that price is just going to continue to get higher. And we, right now, have a four million dollar budget to solve that, and I would hate for that to not be sufficient.
I don't think we can actually extend the time for that two steps.
The other part is, so is, okay, so if we do this, you know, other communities have done combining units, you know, might be what I'm asking, and it hasn't worked out like they thought it would. But my concern is, we kind of moved town hall and I, and asked it, and talking to the officers, the people out of the college, best case scenario, they're looking at two years, probably three.
For your role.
Yeah. And so, yeah, you know, because you've been, so I'm thinking we need to, like you said, have a meeting and talk about it, because I'm thinking we need to look at maybe the first street, get a bid on that. We got to locate town hall while this is being done. If we do that and do the building right, and that could be a temporary town hall or not, we get the elementary school, then we can get rid of that building and transition over there. But it gives us some place to move you guys and then start working on the police department.
We have a meeting scheduled on the seventeen. We have a meeting scheduled on the seventeenth with Destination by Design for the Northwest Recreation Complex, kind of the draft concept there. I envision that conversation, I would take it somewhere in the neighborhood of about an hour. I'd be glad, since we already have it on the calendar, I know that all council members can be at that meeting. Is that a meeting you just want to add that conversation to that agenda?
I would, yeah, I'd be happy to stay, come early or stay late.
I think we need to, we're about to get more balls than we can go with what's happening. We've got, always threatened with death, and we've got property here, property there, you know, we've got this over here, what are we going to do with this? They have housed all of them fit together without running out of budget. So I, I think, or we could sit down, look it over the beach up before we start.
I, if I remember in the scheduling of that, there was some conflicts before five o'clock, so we would just add that after the discussion in Northwest Recreation is okay with that.
Okay. It's hard to handle. I was clear about that the other day, I did twenty-four, but I had problems or something.
I can tell them as soon as I hear a, a, like a year, four o'clock, four thirty.
I'll take them over, I'll take them thirty.
I'll take them, yeah, I love, I love.
Again, are we going to stay there until seventeen, October?
Do we, you know, are we going to stay, this, we'll just stay with the five thirty and then we'll add it as a second item on the agenda?
No, just extend my. Here. Five thirty until seventeen.
I got it. All right, the next item on that list is, uh, the fire department was awarded a grant to replace, upgrade and replace our existing ladder truck. Our existing ladder truck is seventy-eight feet tall, and this grant will allow us to get a ladder that's over one hundred feet tall for better access of areas inside the city limits. The grant was for one, one million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Chief Carroll's been out, uh, looking at fire trucks, evaluating those with his staff. They have found a truck and would like to bring that contract back to you at our November meeting for that, for that replacement truck. Right now, it's on a little over a year kind of weight, is that about right? Eight, seventeen, eighteen months, something like that. So it would be in budget, um, and would allow us to, to begin moving forward with that replacement. We want to make sure that you're okay for us to bring, uh, an apparatus within budget to the meeting in November to begin moving forward with that.
All we do, you know, it goes to Spindale, I heard, I talked to him.
Correct, so the way that was written, we don't have the grant yet from the state, but the way that was written up was that that ladder would be transferred to town to Spindale. So our ladder, again, being seventy-eight feet tall, it's a single axle ladder, this would be a dual axle ladder, a hundred feet tall. There are a lot of structures that it gives us more capability to do. About giving or donating that ladder to Spindale allows us to ensure that that ladder is close. There are some areas in town where we are a little concerned about cramp angles and, and approach angles of getting this larger ladder in. But overall, it gives our citizens a better, better quality of service. And for the areas that we need that ladder, where we have a two-lattery, with Spindale being a mutual aid department for us, a staffed mutual aid department, we can request that ladder anytime. So it was a benefit to the town of Rutherford to donate that. I talked to the mayor about it, and I know there may be some concerns about that, that the city purchased this ladder. Well, we're also being recipients of a ladder worth probably something near a one point five to maybe one point six million dollars that has extended reach on it as well. And if we were to try to sell that asset today, it might be worth a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, less than ten percent of what our, if you look at it from a match perspective, of what that might be, and it goes to a sister city. Now, we are not donating all of the equipment that goes with it as well. So they would, the equipment that's on the existing ladder will be transferred over to the, our new ladder. And they would then have to outfit that ladder, restrike the ladder, those type of things, put it in the service. For us, that ladder is a two thousand and twelve, so demo, and it was a demo, demo unit. Well, it wasn't built to the specifications of the department, it was bought as a, honestly, it was bought as a good deal. And so there are some functional capabilities that we see here that this new ladder provides to the town of Rutherford, especially to our larger commercial buildings, specifically the hospital, our, our schools. It gives us a lot more flexibility and capability on those. And so, yes, there would be a donation of that, the way it's written up to them. But not until this new ladder arrives in Rutherford and is outfitted and goes to the service. The other, the other component of that too is, up until Forest City purchased their, uh, new ladder, there were only two ladders inside the, the Rutherford County. This now upgrades that to four ladders. Forest City has two ladders, we don't know how long they'll keep those two ladders. Uh, we have a ladder, this would be another, this would be the fourth ladder. Ladder is a very specialized piece of apparatus, it's not something that all jurisdictions have. But with our ISO rating, we do have a need for aerial waterway. If there are ever any, which there always are, and I don't, I'm not jinxing this vehicle for it gets here, but there's always mechanical issues. There was a time before Forest City received their ladder when their ladder that they have now, the older ladder, was broken down. And our ladder was providing mutual aid coverage to the entire county. And so by having Spindale have this ladder, it gives us an opportunity to ensure that there's more likelihood that there's never an opportunity where the ladder is not provided to the citizens of Rutherford. So I could look any citizen in the face and tell you that by donating this ladder to the town of Spindale or us receiving this grant, the benefit is more leaning to the town of Rutherford's citizen than it is the Spindale citizen. Now, there's great value for citizens, their, the citizens of Spindale, they're getting a ladder. The value for us to be able to have that, that kind of insurance policy for mechanical issues or unfortunately, when the time comes, we may have an incident that is, that would need two ladders, our citizens here would be the benefactor of that.
And I hear you're right that we don't have a chance that we're.
I don't know, uh, that was the way it was written up, but it, as you can see in the state allocation here, it doesn't mention that. So that was the way it was written, uh, I don't know what the contract was.
I think it's one of those things that it helped us getting a full grant because with that money to us, it was actually helping two of your charities.
I understand, I just wanted to get rid of drift or whether, it's just, suppose, the way you answer people that ask you that question are entirely different, if it's driven state law that we transferred, that's the answer. If it's a matter that we really, it's ours and there's some people would like for us to transfer it, then that's a different response, and that's why I'm asking.
And here's what I can tell you, here's how I'd answer that. When, when, when I wrote the grant into the state, that's how it was written, that it would transfer to Spindale. How the state law ended up and how it ends up in this contract, we don't have that yet. This is copied and paste directly from the budget guidance document. And so until we get that contract, I don't know exactly what that is.
I think if somebody asks you, give them the same answer, you just give the guts. This gives us three ladders and the town, it benefits a sister city who are working with our twenty million dollar project beginning, gives us good room.
I'm okay with Brandon bringing back quote for truck. I assume that's on a spec contract or something, it doesn't have to be them.
It will be either on a piggyback contract from a system on Carolina City or it will be on a, a cooperative purchasing agreement contract.
So it's property purchase, doesn't have to be them?
It is on an annual basis, like North Carolina Sheriff's Association does, does on an annual basis. There's a couple of different specs I know the chief's looking at, I, I, you know right off, those are cooperative bid or piggybacks. Um, yeah, they will be, the one way home this week will be a piggyback. So that kind of news source whatever, HGC, cooperative, those will be cooperative contracts, which they would not require us to do.
Will, will the new, where the ladder truck fit in a listed space?
Yes, sir.
Well, there's no construction required.
The last one is the utility fund. So this provides a grant to the town for a project we're waiting on for some time now then on our wastewater treatment plant. Allows us to rebuild the John Smith Road pump station, which is our oldest pump station in our system. Allows us to put new pumps in over Waterworks Road pump station, which is our second oldest pump station in our system. Allows us to replace and extend some new gravity lines in the New Hope area as a part of the redevelopment plan. Uh, and I'm kind of using Saint John's A and B Zion and Saint Gabriel's Episcopal as landmarks because those are kind of the end of the development, so kind of running some new gravity lines into those areas to open up some area for development, redevelopment, and replacement of aging lines. So with all that said, we would like to engage RFQ process to hire an engineering firm to assist us with the final plan development of those, the construction administration of those projects, bidding of those projects. This would be very similar to what we talked about before on the, um, police department, but this would just be beginning that RFQ process for engineering firms.
Will we use all that money to those things? Or we're going to have money left over that we can apply to, you know, our improvement plan of wastewater? Because we had the five-year plan of what we needed to replace at twenty-seven?
Um.
Maybe.
I don't know. Uh, until we hire an engineer and, and look at what all these are, what those costs are, my, my gut would tell me that we probably would not have money left.
Do we envision having, yes, a rival, more property rivalry on the, you know?
No, no, those will all be existing town, town streets. I don't envision any, any need for additional rivalries.
Only three friends.
No, and then, so if it goes on the state highway system, you would apply for, um, an approach meeting with the state on Carolina to use the state right away.
It's not digging up the right, it's going to side parallel or, you don't really know.
Until it's fully engineered, I don't know that I can tell you, yes or no.
Just hoping we could end up with a sidewalk, because I'm.
Oh, right side of the house.
And then not a rich side, maybe it's an issue with that.
If we get an extended out, we care how much house we would concern.
I say we look for a sort of line on their side.
Before we go on, were you needing the individual action team on this? Do you need actions from a total thing, or you just get, you know, this?
Just discussion, just to make sure that, you know, as we move forward, you understand our thought process of our renovation and make sure your agreements with those.
Well, I would.
We don't catch you off guard, which is trying to start spending, you know, how that might, might have, I guess, not, five million, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars at the next meeting.
Is that it?
That's it on that one.
All right, all right.
Under my report.
Any question, any final questions, counsel, comments? Thank you, sir.
Uh, under my report, I do have a couple of things. We are in the final fundraising stage for the Eric Wells Memorial Shelter. The goal there was to raise fifty thousand, we are at forty-four thousand. So I'm hoping by the seventeenth, we will close that funding gap and maybe talk about that out, maybe on the fifteenth, on the seventeenth as well. So I want to thank all of the folks that continue to contribute there. Uh, if you have not been up into the Rutherford Cemetery in late, I encourage you to please go into the Rutherford Cemetery underneath the American flag. It's the only American flag in there, as you can see. Uh, we have installed a new veterans memorial there, who will plan to have a ceremony on November eleventh at eleven a.m. to honor all of the veterans that have served, uh, that have, have had, of course, continue to call Rutherford home. So, uh, really proud of the way that project turned out. Uh, mayor mentioned it in his comments, but, uh, on Thursday, October the twenty-sixth at four p.m. we'll celebrate the grand opening of fire station number two, you know, that everyone can come there. And I think we mentioned it in the report on the streets, but Collect Street did close permanently on Monday. We did send a letter out to all those property owners, so far, that's been going pretty, pretty well, I haven't heard any negative comments on that.
Is that it? Thank you. Parkland meeting reports. Okay, that's it? Any question or comments from council? Just one final comment from council, I asked, I mentioned all again about the great results we received from Riddick. Uh, I encourage you, if you pass calls with any of our representatives, make sure that you bring it to their attention, we appreciate it. Uh, don't go for a fact, it's possible someone may be up here for a health op festival. But if you see them, make sure that they, we recognize what they did, we should be very proud of what they did for the town of Rutherford. I talked to them at the end of this. Uh, we thank them for. Any other question, comments, council?
I was, next year, look as far as funding, say this is a one-shot deal or, will you see it?
Their budgets are by any of them, so there's need locked in for two years.
Is there, is there a timeframe for us to extend these terms once we give them?
To the state-directed grants, that is, and there's reporting, uh, and continued reporting until you finish, but usually there's not a lot.
It depends on which category they fall into once the contract gets here. There's two different categories, and it depends on that. I want to know more from the contracts that you're.
Uh, I understand there's need for a closed session, that being the reason being.
Return time.
I entertain the motion that you're going to closed session.
So moved.
Has a motion in a second, all of those in favor, reach right in. I think you will give us about a five minute recess, and we'll start all over again. Thanks again for everybody joining us.